Good evening and welcome to the January 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Helfer and I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. That means by remote connection as well as in-person. And I'll read you a few points about our remote participation in a moment. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. Also, I just need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It is all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify us. I'll give you a few seconds, just in case you're connected remotely. All right, so a few points on our hybrid format. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted both in-person and via remote participation in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number or by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 116-417-823. That's 116-417-823. Or, as I mentioned, you can join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is the agenda, that is posted in the agenda, that's posted on the website, on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the Chair. I will start with a roll call vote of the Planning Board members. Bob Wurzhafter, are you present?
Present.
And Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
And Charlene Greenhalgh.
Greenhalgh.
Okay, present. And Megan Story and Bob Dupus are not present tonight. All right. So with that being said, let's go to our first agenda item, which is the minutes for the January 9th meeting. Any corrections or additions to the minutes as drafted? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval of the January 9, 2023 meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Warren Chain, second.
All right, Bob Wurzhafter.
Approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
And Charlene Greenhalgh.
Approve.
And this is Catherine Helfer, and I also approve the minutes for the January 9th, 2023 meeting. Next item on our agenda is site plan review for change of use for 307 Orleans Road. And this is an amended site plan review for change of use. And do I have someone presenting for this matter? Yes. Please go ahead. And please give us your name when you reach the microphone. Thank you. And be sure the microphone is turned on.
I'm Green. We're ready.
Good. Great.
Good afternoon. Eric Peony, owner of the plaza. And we are interested in having the retail space changed to a restaurant-style space going forward. And I do have David and Tanya with me today, who are the two for that as well, if you'd like to speak with them as well.
Great. And this is for the center unit, is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
All right. If I could just ask you straight off, we just needed a little more information. There was some discrepancy about the number of seats that you're planning for the restaurant. Is it 20 or 16? And also, we just needed to know the number of employees. We just want to calculate accurately the number of parking spaces needed, although I understand from Ryan that it'll be less than what's already provided.
Yes. Right now, we would like 20.
All right.
At the moment. And I believe they're planning on four to six employees.
All right.
There as well. And right now, we have 42 spaces, the parking spaces.
For the whole plaza?
For our plaza, yes.
Yes, okay, great. But that accommodates the other units as well?
Correct.
All right. So that yields a total of how many parking spaces for this center unit?
Well, we have the liquor store on one side, we have the breakfast shop on the other side. So I don't know how it actually breaks down, but I have 42 total with everything.
All right.
The difference being is the coffee shop opens in the morning, and it goes until 3:00. And then the new proposed one is going to open at 3:00. So.
All right.
It should make a, you know, big difference for the spaces, I would think.
All right, great. All right. And also, yes, you do show the location of the dumpster. There is a dumpster located on the property?
In the back of the building.
In the back?
Yes.
Okay. And is that, it's, I understand that's a shared dumpster, but it's fairly large.
No, that, the one that's, the one that's out back is strictly for the liquor store.
Okay.
So I have two out there.
Okay.
And then their center unit would be another small one, approximately six yards.
Okay, great. Thank you. Arthur's showing me. Thank you very much. All right. Let's go forward with questions and comments from board members. Arthur, would you like to go ahead?
Okay, so I saw this note. It's part of the parking notes. It's the part of the last paragraph. When the plaza was created, it included a shared parking lot for the three buildings. Over time, the generosity of neighbors has eroded, resulting in an erection of exclusive parking signs. And speaking of discouraging words from disgruntled patrons, the shared parking lot is only shared on paper. I don't know that that has any effect on anything that we're doing, but I thought that was an interesting comment on the, on the site plan. The reason why I bring it up is when you take a look at the plan, and when, what appears to me, the way it was developed, when this was first brought before the board, way back when, I think, the site drains from this property to the next parking lot. That's where all the storm drainers is. You got one catch basin for your entire development there. And certainly, if you ran through the numbers today, that would work. But it, it appears like there's more than adequate drainage if you account for how the site functions. So I don't think that's an issue. The only thing I noted is that the corner of, buildings are mostly have gutters and downspouts that go into, looks like pipes that go on the ground for dry pits. The only one that wasn't connected was the one at the corner of 303.
Yes.
It's there, but it just, it just hasn't been connected. That's the only thing I would ask for, is to have that reconnected.
Absolutely. Yep. We had one of the cars bump into the gutter, so I have to.
Oh, yeah.
Straighten out the gutter. Yes.
No more questions, no more comments? Warren?
I just had one comment based on the comments on parking, that the work seems to be extremely popular. And I'm wondering, does that have an impact on your ability to park in your, your domain?
Well, we, you know, over the last year or two, yeah, they're definitely doing a very nice business. And it has overflowed onto my side a little bit. So we've spoken together, and because I also own the property out back. So I think what we're going to be doing is talking to them about maybe getting their people to have outback a little bit, to relieve it. But we have run into trouble with four or five cars, like, rolling over to our side, especially during the summer. So it's definitely something that we're going to address, and we have to.
Okay. Then I don't have any other comments.
Okay, great. Charlene?
Actually, all my comments have been addressed.
Okay, great. Bob?
Oh.
I forgot you.
The, the only question to me is whether the dumpster's big enough if you, everything is paper.
We have two. We, we actually have two dumpsters out there. One's for all corrugated, one for the regular rubbish.
Okay.
That's what we have. And I think in this particular case, we were talking about sharing them together. So it's only going to be the two, I think, that we'll leave on the property. So there won't be any others out there.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Charlene?
I actually do have a follow-up. Are you going to be recycling your shells?
Do you want to add?
Is that a yes?
I think that's probably a yes, knowing David. Let's see what he has to say.
Hello, David Eldridge, Elwood's Raw Bars. Yes, we would love to recycle our shells. And we're trying to find a way or a place to recycle those. So if anyone has any ideas, but we, we would love to try to recycle all our shells, absolutely.
Okay. I know they have a big recycling program up in Wellfleet, which I'm sure somehow we can share in that recycling. So.
Yeah, I totally agree. And we, I mean, they should be recycled. And so, yes, that is our plan to absolutely recycle the Oyster and Little Neck shells.
Any questions or comments from the public, or anyone connected remotely, before we move to vote? All right. I'm hearing that the board is inclined to approve the amended site plan. So may I have a motion to approve the amended site plan with the standard conditions as presented in the staff report?
Madam Chair, regarding the application for Eric Peony for the property located at 307 Orleans Road, I move to find that the application information as presented is complete, and further that the application meets the necessary criteria for the approval with conditions for the change of use, amended site plan of the lighting retail, lighting store retail use to a raw bar eatery restaurant use. And the conditions is outlined, the standard conditions is outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
This is Bob Wurzhafter. I second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, approve.
Arthur Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
And Charlene Greenhalgh.
Approve.
And this is Catherine Helfer, and I also approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Great. Next item on the agenda is request for a bond release. And this is for 1218 Main Street. And we do have an interim as-built for site improvements, and Thad Eldridge will be presenting.
Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Eldridge, East Southeast. We've provided you with the interim as-built. They are missing the concrete pad and trash enclosure and the plantings. In our release request, I've mentioned that the plantings are really subject to conservation jurisdiction. Those will be planted in the spring. And they have lined up the concrete pad to be poured when things warm up again. The applicant, the property owner, is not able to be here. She's in Florida right now, and her house got walloped.
Oh, dear.
And so she's busy working on that. And she's looking for all the funds that she can to take care of that. So we've requested all of it. We do have everything lined up. They've done a great job so far. So we appreciate everything that we can get back from the bond.
Great. And I understand, Ryan, you did inspect this property. Is that correct? Yeah. And please go ahead and comment. Yeah.
Sure, yes. I just do a site visit to see that the information presented on the as-built was there. And, and that is correct, that the plantings have not yet been done. But he's been very clear about that in his, his request for release.
All right. Comments from board members, questions for Thad? Bob Wurzhafter?
I have none.
And Art Spru?
None.
Warren Chain?
Yeah, Thad, just one question. Somewhere on the plan, I believe, I saw that the work that remains undone is under the EDIS, or the review of the Conservation Commission. Is there a formal process that they will be involved in the spring when the activities of landscape and probably the final drainage and picnic tables and so on, that they will be obviously involved? Or do they, do they need to be asked to be involved?
It's at the end of three growing seasons that they perform an inspection to make sure that the plants are still alive. And those have to be planted and growing for a documented three seasons.
Okay. But they, it's in their queue, put it that way.
Yes.
Okay. No, no further question. By the way, I think the whole design and implementation is fabulous.
Thank you.
Yes. So I, what I'm hearing from the board, I would suggest that we.
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, please go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. What are the costs associated with the remaining work?
I am unsure.
Okay. When does the mitigation work need to be completed? In other words, was this done under a notice of intent? So they have three years from when the notice of intent was issued?
Technically, they do. Our Conservation Commission does require three growing seasons, three summers that it survives.
Okay.
So every notice of intent with planting automatically requires one extension. So if they were to go in and plant at the end of the three years, and then get two extensions, they can't get a third, they would have to reapply. So that makes it very difficult on their end. They do have contractors lined up to do everything in the spring. It was just a little late in the fall when they were able to.
And just my final question. What does note number two mean on the plan? The limit of the mow strip will be allowed to reduce to the proposed limit.
That's a good question.
I think Thad knows me well enough to know that I always write notes.
Read the notes. There was a comment from the Conservation Commission. So the mow strip is specifically around, around the parking and around the drainage.
That I figured out, but I just couldn't really understand what the rest of that note meant. So.
So when they cleared out here, they went out to the full limit of work. And you'll see that some of that lawn extends to the, within the 50, particularly right there. So they're going to let the mow strip here.
Okay.
Regrow back out so that there's, I'll say, naturalized vegetation. It's mostly invasive plant species, so it's not really anything that we want. But we still don't want lawn going into that 50. Additionally, the limit of work was a little bit larger around that, that basin. And we're really looking at keeping a three-foot swath there, really a lawnmower, maybe two passes of a lawnmower going around. And that's so we can battle the invases and keep them out of the mitigation areas while maintaining as much naturalized as possible.
And actually, I have more of a question for the board.
Yes, please go ahead.
In other communities where I have worked, the, even if another entity in town has jurisdiction over, say, the plantings, the board, the planning board itself has always retained some form of cash, just as belt and suspenders to make sure the work gets done. But I don't know what this board has historically done.
I'll reply to you. In general, in general, our practice has been, we do consider ourselves responsible to see that all the work is done. The amount of the performance bond initially, and again, I'm speaking generally now, as our practice has been, may or may not be for the full amount of the work. Usually, it's not. Usually, it's some percentage. Or we go through, if they give us an itemized cost estimate, which is better, we go through and we choose the items that need, that we need to know are done, but don't have another method of enforcement or, or confirmation. And then we would set the bond for those items. So in this case, we set the bond for the full amount, which is unusual, very unusual for us to do. I think it was because there was a large amount of work to be done, and it was an, an old site that needed some modern, you know, brought up to date. Yes, it needed to be brought up to date. So I'm going to suggest to the board, and this is a suggestion, that in this case, because they, because we did require a lot of work for, from them, and we did ask for the full amount for, for the bond, which is unusual for us, I would suggest that we actually refund the full amount, knowing that the applicant will complete the remainder of the work. But you're absolutely right. It's not that we hand it off. But in this case, we, we asked for more initially. So, and because of the extent of the work, I'm just asking, that would be my suggestion. But I'd like to hear how other board members feel. If you disagree with that, that's fine. We could withhold some, a certain portion.
I might have expressed it differently, but I think I have the same conclusion. There's no, nothing out there would suggest to me that the reasonably minor amount of landscaping and so on, that really can't be done now.
Yeah.
Won't be done in the future, given the amount of work that's gone in there and the quality of that work. I think the whole, the whole site has been done. I don't know how much the remaining work would be.
Yeah.
But it has to be a very modest amount compared to the 65,000. So if you're going to recommend it, I certainly am prepared to support it.
It's at our discretion. If we wanted to withhold a few thousand, we're certainly at liberty to do that. I think this particular applicant, just knowing the history of it, it was, how to put, quite an extensive process. And we asked a lot of them. And they've certainly demonstrated their willingness to comply, and the fact that they did comply with everything we requested. So, but Arthur, do you have another suggestion?
I'll, I'll agree with your proposed suggestion.
All right. And.
Yeah, I think we just hold Thad responsible.
All right.
His reputation, it would be in jeopardy if it doesn't go through. But I don't think we need to hold any money here.
Yeah. Okay, good. So then I would ask for a motion to grant the full amount.
Madam Chair, I would move that we allow for a complete release of the bond and state, and statement of conditions for 1218 Main Street.
Thank you. And may I have a second to that motion?
This is Bob Wurzhafter. I second.
Let's do a, a roll call vote. Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
And Charlene Greenhalgh.
Approve.
And this is Catherine Helfer, and I also approve. Thank you very much, Thad.
Thank you so much. I'll take the responsibility, but I'm sometimes hard to get a hold of.
They have to come before us.
Great. All right. So now we're going to move on to our long-range planning discussion. And we are again. And we are again continuing with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center proposed draft zoning bylaw amendment. And you have in your packet a very clear and brief summary from Ryan. And actually, I think to begin, I'm going to ask Ryan to make some comments.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So when, at your last meeting, we talked about bringing forward to you tonight a draft of what the final language for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center would look like based on your recent discussions. I have attempted to do that. I've included two additional supplemental pieces tonight to that draft language. One is a revised background and introduction statement. Just because that has accompanied the bylaw all this time, I didn't want to completely delete it, but I did need to tweak it, but it wasn't ready for your packets last week. So that is before you tonight, the redline version of what that introduction statement might look like, as well as the amended district boundary. So those are both before you. And I've provided a memo as well to, really with two goals in mind. One, to summarize the changes and the discussions that you've had to date and the substantive items that have been amended, including the RPZ footnote language, as well as provide you with an outline for what the process may look like if you do choose to recommend the article to the select board to initiate the public hearing process tonight. And that process timeline includes a meeting with the Airport Commission. I reached out to the chair, and there is a placeholder for representatives of the planning board to present the RPZ language at that meeting. We've, I've recommended a public information session based on the Neighborhood Center changes to date, including the RPZ, in addition to a public hearing on the article. And we would need time as staff to work with counsel on putting the article into a warrant format. So what's before you tonight is the language. It reflects all of your deliberations. What would come next and be recommended for the warrant would be potentially three articles. A zoning map amendment, an amendment to the protective zoning bylaw to insert this district, and potentially footnote amendment to the R20 zoning district to reflect the RPZ footnotes as well. But we would work with counsel over the course of the next couple of weeks, leading up to the public hearing, to put that together as to form. One thing that is not reflected in the changes before you is some of the most recent discussions that you've had about ensuring affordable and attainable housing. There were some questions raised, and the board requested that staff look into whether certain provisions of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance could be adopted here. My recommendation to you is that that wouldn't be the solution, I think, that you're looking for. The ADU ordinance or bylaw caps the number of, of buyright units to 10 per year. It's administered by the building commissioner through a rental registration program. I think scaling that up to what we're talking about here in the, in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center for every buyright unit that's developed, wouldn't be a great model for enforcement and monitoring. But there are other ways to, I think, get at that affordability. We had talked about whether an inclusionary zoning ordinance as a separate working document and product of the board could address that. And so I think where you are tonight is with, is with two options potentially ahead. The first being to recommend this to town meeting and proceeding with the sort of process outline as we've roughly laid it out here for you. And if at some point it is determined that it's not ready, then it's not ready to proceed. The other option would be to continue to work with the Airport Commission and the public on educating everyone around the RPZ footnotes and continue talking about language that would ensure affordable, attainable, year-round housing, more so than just the intent that's drafted here. And so that would be not making a recommendation tonight.
All right, thanks. So before we go to staff, I mean, board discussion, I just want to reiterate what Ryan is saying, that in this format, we understand basically that the draft is complete, but what we don't have is any language that ensures that the increased density that's being allowed for in the bylaw is used for the, for the intended use, which is that we want to provide a greater diversity of housing options to Chatham, particularly attainable and affordable housing. And so our first option, if we go ahead tonight, that means we put it forward without that language. But if in the process, we see that, for example, there's pushback from the community, we can pull it at any time. The other option is to continue to have staff work on language, to incorporate that language into the draft bylaw, and then go forward. The only other open issue is a pretty simple one in my, in my opinion, and that's that we look at the the new boundaries that we're proposing, and we just make sure that the zones, as defined by Cape Cod Commission, that those zones are extended to those new boundaries. And basically, we can use the same principles. That would be the option, use the same principles that the Cape Cod Commission defined for those zones. So let's go to board discussion. Bob Worchafter, I'll call on you first.
Well, I certainly don't think I'm going to approve it if it doesn't have some kind of provision for a guarantee that some of them become affordable. But I'm willing to, to go forward now with the understanding that that is going to become part of the language.
Well, we're sort of at a junction point. If we go forward now, it's not going to be in there unless we pull it out of the process.
I mean, we're going to be amending the language in this based on, on feedback we get. It's not I mean, we, we have a public hearing, we get feedback, we, we're allowed to make some changes to the, to the bylaw based on that feedback. So it isn't like we can't add something. If we, if you're saying we can't, then, then I'm going to say, let's, let's not go forward because I, I think that we have to have some kind of guarantee that some of these properties are going to become affordable.
Ryan, do you want to comment on Bob's comments?
You certainly could add language. I, I think that we as staff might want to just have some time with the director, the housing director, to propose to what the best course might be for what that language is, right? You know, we, we have to you know, we, we can't require the properties be deed restricted outside of some affordability scheme that we have recognized in town, be it attainable, affordable, whatever that is. And we don't yet have that adopted locally as a home rule charter. So there is just some, I think, some work to do to get the type of affordability and attainability assurances you would like to see in this. And I don't know that if we do that over the course of the public hearing for the entirety of the, of the bylaw, that it might not jeopardize the entirety of the bylaw, would be my concern.
Yeah, it's not that it wouldn't go forward, it just, it wouldn't go forward according to the schedule that's in your staff report. And we probably couldn't propose it for annual town meeting 2023 if we want to add that language that ensures some affordable and attainable housing. I think, I think that's the issue. Yes, go ahead, Warren.
In our discussion at our last meeting about density, right, we talked about a minimum density of eight units per acre. No reference to affordable housing in that. But in a, a, what the exact wording is, one additional unit may be permitted for every deed-restricted affordable unit provided up to a maximum of 12 units per acre. So that would, that, that would not guarantee any affordable housing. But the incentive that you get to build some non-affordable housing at a greater density is, was in the feeling of the, of the board. That was enough incentive, so people would probably go for that. But I'd say there's no reason we can't take another bite of that same apple and say the minimum of eight dwelling units per acre, some, you know, with some number of which would need to be affordable. Now, that might be one. So, all right, so you have seven regular ones and one affordable, that's guaranteed. And then you'll get another two if they decide to build, build out to the maximum amount in the draft. And if we were correct that it's enough of incentives, so that's likely, more likely than not to be the case, then you would have three affordable, attainable per acre, which is certainly not all we'd hope it would be, but it's a pretty measurable amount if you take the number of acres that are in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. But I'm all in favor of saying the minimum has to be eight. You've got to build eight units. And maybe one of those has got to be attainable, affordable. And then the wording for the, the density bonus would again, in theory anyway, give us another two per acre. And I'm all for that, if we could, if we could put that in. I don't know how much, unless we're going to, you know, dedicate, you know, a particular lot or two for only affordable housing. But I don't think that's really in keeping with the spirit of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center either. We want it to have attainable, affordable, but we want to also have it be a vibrant neighborhood, I guess you would call it, which would not exclude anybody who wasn't looking for an affordable, attainable, you know, house. So, you know, I had thought it did include a guarantee, and it, it actually doesn't, as drafted, but I'd be happy to take, you've got to build eight, but say one, you could say two of them had to be affordable.
And Madam Chair, if I might respond to that, I, I think what you're describing is how inclusionary zoning ordinances function. They require a certain percentage of any development be dedicated affordable. And I think that's a, a good direction to go in, but we, we need to, I would suggest we need to vet that a little bit. What's the percentage requirement and what level of affordability are we riding into that? And just to be prescriptive about, about what you want. And that would just require a little bit more staff time, I think, to bring that to you.
Well, it would be, it would be the same as what we have, or what we intended by the term deed-restricted affordable units as being the bonus over eight per unit, per acre. I'm assuming, you know, I'm not the expert on what qualifies as affordable, attainable, but if it's deed-restricted, I'm assume that's pretty well prescripted already as to exactly what the parameters are. And if not, then in the course of it moving forward, I assume that'll be expanded on to make it clear. But I'm, but again, there's no guarantee of, of any. If nobody ever chose to go for the bonus, there wouldn't be any. So I'm you don't call it a percentage necessarily. I'm just going to say, we're saying you have to build eight units per acre. We can just say one of them has to be affordable, attainable. And then there's a bonus on top of that, so you'd hope to get three per acre. But, you know, if two is, is even going to, you know, I, that's fine with me too. The whole idea is, yes, we want there to be a significant amount of affordable, attainable housing here. And part of the reason for that is going to be clear after I come up with, you know, my chance to bring things up as a result of my time on the short-term rental committee, which all of a sudden the light went on and several people started beating me over the head with something that we really ought to consider for this zoning bylaw. But, you know, so I, you know, I don't, I don't know what the right number is, whether it's one or two of the eight need to be affordable. I'd say one probably, but, but I could be twisted, have my arm twisted. But then there would be a guarantee and an expectation that you'd have three affordable units per acre.
Yes, Ryan, please.
So typically, those percentages and the area median income requirements that are written into inclusionary zoning ordinances are defined by need through a community's housing production plan, if they've done one, or some sort of needs assessment. It's tied back to that. So I think we have to ground any, anything we put forward in some sort of a needs analysis. And, and that would be the work of staff to, to firm that up so that it's defensible.
I would just assume that the wording we had in the draft was essentially a term of art for exactly all of the requirements you're referencing. I mean, it should be.
I mean, we can't write the bylaw to say that based on that inclusionary bylaw or regulation by, that defines what these are, this is the, this is the number that are needed. I mean, that the, I mean, I assume that we wouldn't want to say a, a number in our bylaw because it's going to, it's, it would be obsolete in a couple of years. So, so we would, we would refer to some other regulation or bylaw that would have that. So can we not write this bylaw to, to reference that, even if that other one doesn't exist? We would say when it is written, or something, you know, I mean, it's not the first time we've referred to something.
Again, I don't know enough to be dangerous here, but we have lots of affordable slash attainable housing in town. I shouldn't say lots. We have some, right? And so we know what that means. I, I assume we know what it means. And it's all we're saying, I think, is that whatever parameters are in place for the affordable units being built down by Joblot or others, the same criteria would apply here, the same author's authority, or not sure what the right word is, but I mean, I didn't think this was, we were now going to get into trying to define what we mean by affordable at all.
I don't think that's what Ryan is saying. In fact, she's saying the opposite, but that what we need to refer to is not available yet.
Right. I, I think that the town's housing policies are evolving well, just not at the pace that this bylaw has evolved, and because there's been so much discussion around year-round affordable, attainable at your prior two meetings, you know, it seemed worth a discussion about whether we pause to address that in this bylaw as circumstances have changed over the past three years, and certainly in the past seven years since, since this work began. Or if you proceed tonight with what you have deliberated on and agreed to, and the town's housing policy efforts, which will continue to evolve and include defined, affordable, attainable limits, it will, it sounds like it will continue to evolve to include an inclusionary ordinance that would be connected to this, but those pieces just aren't in place yet. So, you know, I would say that you have an option to, to proceed without that, knowing that that work is being done and is forthcoming, but it's just not reflected in, in this language.
Katie, did you want to make a comment?
Sure, just to clarify. So the town, I mean, we, we utilize the state's definition of affordable housing. What hasn't been fully adopted as of yet is the home rule petition for the, the housing trust, which includes the attainable housing definitions that the town wants to use.
Yes.
And therefore, for us to codify in a bylaw something that hasn't been necessarily adopted yet for attainable housing, wouldn't be appropriate. Affordable housing, absolutely, but the attainable housing portion of it, I would just caution that we would not necessarily want to refer to that until we know that that home rule petition gets approved.
And do we have a timeline for that, a potential timeline for that approval?
We don't, but we, but we, we had town meeting vote reauthorization of that home rule petition at the last town meeting so that it's still valid before the legislature at this time. But we don't have a timeline. We actually talked, I talked actually with the town manager today about reaching out to Representative P. We actually talked, I talked actually with the town manager today about reaching out to Representative Pete to see if we could get a timeline on that or at least update it about where it stands.
Okay, but I just want to reiterate, so the board's clear, we we're at a decision point, and there's actually two different options, and we kind of can't have our cake and eat it, too. If I may be blunt, we can go forward at with the draft, basically as it's presented to you tonight, but that does not contain within it language that ensures that we will see some attainable and some affordable housing in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. If we need that assurance, it changes the timeline that we're working under. We can incorporate that language into this bylaw, but staff needs time to craft that language and incorporate it. So it does mean that we probably could not bring this before annual town meeting 2023. And as I understand it, it is, it's not that we, that there can't be changes in the public hearing process, there can be changes. But to, how to say, to properly draft the language, we couldn't really do it that way. So it isn't either or, we have to make a choice, whether we want to go forward with it as it stands without that language or if we want to have a different timeline essentially and go forward with the assurance that that language will be drafted and we can incorporate it. Is that an accurate expression? Yeah.
Yes, I I would say so, and I think it, just to add to that, it would be staff's intent to continue the momentum you have on this as though we were preparing for a fall town meeting. You know, so nothing would be tabled or shelved or backburnered, we would continue the work on this and present it to you as a recommendation to the next available town meeting, whenever that may be.
Yeah. Let's see, so I've heard from Bob Arthur, I don't think we've heard from you.
I, I don't have any problem with some of the points that Bob is and Warren are bringing up. But I really do want to move this to May town meeting. I know that this isn't perfect. I know it's not, I, and and I, all the points that Ryan, that that you and Katie are bringing up are are absolutely valid. You, you need to add those components and describe in order to cover this the right way. This at least provides some opportunity, and let's as a planning board, put some onus on staff that have that all ready for next town meeting then in 2024. I don't know that there's going to be any rush to actually, you know, put, put anything building in place once this is adopted. I I think that we have so many other hurdles here on the Neighborhood Center zoning that we hope to get past with this first, with this first round. I I do think we're going to revisit some aspects of this as we move down the road, just like we did with the ADU. And we refined it, and it worked out well. I I like to go ahead and move ahead with this, even if it means to hold the language that we have right now that gets us, gets us across the finish line for this part of it. I'm not discounting anything that you, Bob and Warren have said.
Great, Charlene?
I just, we do define affordable and affordable house in our zoning bylaw. So if somebody decided to do 12 units, they would have to abide by those two definitions. I am, I think I'm understanding the concern that staff has in that we're, we're not, we're not addressing low income and we're not addressing attainable income with those two definitions, and I think we want to be all inclusive with what's included. I'm actually okay with the four, ooh, I'm getting feedback here. You know, the four additional units, I understand the concern about, you know, having a inclusionary at this point regarding that. I I did have some other questions, is now a good time to?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay.
But I just want to be, if I could just be clear, in terms of our options.
I understand the options.
And would you be in favor of going ahead as is or of?
I I'm not sure yet.
Okay, great.
To be honest with you.
All right.
I, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
In in your memo, which was great, and I was appreciative of that, the last bullet, language to require commercial uses in the front 30 feet of a building's first floor along Route 28. Where is that? I could not find that. I even did a search of 30 and I could not find that.
Yeah.
Anywhere in the document.
We definitely included that, but I'm gonna.
Page 14, under special use regulations. There's a mixed use development and a little graphic down below that shows.
I'm just wondering if we want to actually somewhere say the first 30 feet shall be dedicated to to commercial?
In the text, you mean?
In the text, only because I completely missed the 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 picture. So thank you for that, I'm like, I know it has to be here somewhere, but I just, I I was missing it. In the purpose, and I know we talked about it last time, and and there may be a good reason why you did not include it. But I did not see a mention of prohibiting seasonal use of housing. I know we define seasonal use in the zoning bylaw, and there may be a very valid reason why you you kept it out. But I did not see that in the purpose. I also didn't see an intent, but you don't necessarily need a purpose and intent in a zoning bylaw. And the last, oh, in the the map on page four, which has the zones A1, A2, and B, just a reminder, you're going to need that map, the whole thing, which, by the way, I I do like the confines of that new map, I was happy to see that. And last but not least, and and I'm probably preaching to the choir here, ladies, and I apologize, the footnotes regarding the airport situation, those need to be a footnote to something, and right now they're not a footnote to anything, they're just listed as footnotes. So they need to, you know, one through four need to be somewhere in your table.
Yeah, they're intended to be a footnote to that use table.
Yeah, so it just needs to, somewhere you need to have that one, two, three, four, or one through four. But the, other than that, that that's all I had, and and I'm I'm torn
Yes.
on the affordability.
Yes. It's not just affordability, I think.
Exactly.
In fact, I would emphasize attainable housing more than affordable for West Chatham.
And and I think that's where I'm, I'm also torn. You know, if if we were concerned that all of a sudden there was going to be, you know, if this passed and there was going to be an abundance of development being done to, you know, get eight units and have none of them be affordable and have them be high rent or what have you. And I don't know, because I'm coming late into this and I apologize, was there any discussion of doing this as a DCPC so as to put a moratorium in place, which doesn't take a town meeting vote, it takes support of the Board of Selectmen and support of the Planning Board, to put a DCPC in place so that only the bare minimum would be allowed to move forward at this point? There'd be a halt until you can do what you want to do and have the wording you want to have there to see it come to to the fruition that you want it to. I don't know if that has been thought of, and I only bring it up because when I was in Harwich, as the town planner there, we actually utilized that for our West, for the West Harwich District. It's a district of critical planning concern and under the Cape Cod Commission, which Ryan used to work there. It allows you to create a district of regional impact, it's a, it's a DRI. You you create an overlay district, or it doesn't even have to be an overlay, it can be, you're changing it to this particular, you know, zoning, because there was a a good reason behind it, economic development, affordable housing, traffic, intermodal. I think you've got the aspects you need here to fit into the different categories that that would make up this this overlay district. Am I using the wrong acronym? It's a DCDC, right?
No, you are.
Yeah, okay.
No, that's the correct acronym, and and the tool is intended to pause development while zoning can be written or rewritten or amended to address whatever concern has has developed from unintended consequences from developments, whether it's impacts to water quality, housing, traffic, et cetera. It's, it has been a very useful tool, I don't know if it was explored here in the history of this project.
No. No, it wasn't. If we were to use that tool, how would the timing go? I mean, because we're working again with a pretty tight timeline here, so we would still be going forward without knowing that that could be put into places.
So I'll just use my own personal example that I did in Harwich is that I do believe we nominated the DCPC in September. And the paperwork is, you know, there's, there's a lot to it, you need to have an an application and and the the Planning Board left it to staff, you know, I brought it to them, to the Planning Board when when we were getting near to to finishing. But it's basically something that staff does, you know, historic can get involved, you you take bits and pieces from other entities. And so the bylaw that we ended up bringing to town meeting was actually that next May. So it was quick. We were able to do, we were able to do the DCPC, we were able to put the zoning bylaw together, because a moratorium can be a year and they will grant an an extension of six months. So the timeline is there for this for a town meeting in 2024.
Right, but if we wanted to, okay, so yours, but if we wanted to bring the bylaw as it is to 2023, we wouldn't use this mechanism.
No, it's, that's way too quick.
Yeah.
That's what what this would do is kind of put a a hold on development, you can allow for certain continued development. You you outline which ones you would allow to to make, you know.
Right.
If somebody wants to do a change of use, that's in keeping with the district as it is now, that can be an allowable change of use. If it's a special permit use, that you may want to rethink that. But it just, it's a, it's a, it's a great mechanism, because as we know, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, which is the zoning amendments for small communities, is horrible. We're planning through zoning, and we shouldn't be doing that, we should be zoning through planning.
Yeah.
And the DCPC mechanism allows you to do that. You plan, and then you do your zoning based on that planning.
Ryan has a comment.
I do, I mean, you know, as a former commission employee, I I have seen the value and recognize the value in the DCPC tool. And I think in this particular instance, if you all were starting from scratch, it would be my top recommendation to utilize that. However, I think a lot of the work that has been done to date was born out of a separate commission planning process, where they did corridor planning for Route 28, and then this was a piece that extended out of that with some of the other district, Neighborhood Center District planning that you've done. So I I think the town has done a lot of good planning work, and you have a bylaw that's almost ready.
Yeah.
Right, it just has one piece that may not be addressed to everyone's satisfaction as of yet. But there is good work occurring simultaneously that I think can speak to that, you know, in in the near future, right? I think, you know, there has been discussion of an inclusionary housing ordinance.
Right.
So, yeah, I I.
Yes.
I'll pause there.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think that's correct. I think this has been a long work and process, and I'm not sure that this mechanism, I would agree with Ryan, whether it's what we need to do at this point. I think basically what I'm trying to hear from the board is just either or, you know, we go for 2023, but if we do that, we have to understand that it lacks the language that ensures a certain amount of attainable and or affordable housing so that we're putting it forward without that language, we just need to be aware of that. And it is true that we can add things during the public hearing process and so on. But I think what I'm hearing from Ryan is that that particular language does need to be carefully thought through, and that may not be something that we can get added during that public hearing process.
I think it's just such an important topic that you don't want to do it on the fly, you know, and in such short order. I think you'll have a lot of very interested members of the public that want to weigh in. And so I think we just need to give that process its due.
Yeah, and what we're doing here in changing this from GB3 to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning, one of the main things we're doing is we're allowing greater density and partic, in particular, greater density of residential use. And density is a concern in Chatham, you know, it's very, it's a hot button in Chatham. And so I just want to see what the board's thinking, because allowing greater residential density, we do want to channel that into the uses that we that we intend. And I agree with Warren, it doesn't have to be 100% attainable and affordable. There can be some expensive units included, but we do, but we want to see that there's some attainable and or affordable. So I think, again, we we can either go forward with the draft as it is, or we would have to think of maybe an annual town meeting in the fall, maybe a special meeting, something like that. So can I get a sense of the board or?
Well, I, I mean, I, first, I want to hear what Warren has to say about this whole thing. But what happens on these properties where you've put the small amount of commercial in the front and there isn't an acre left? Does, is it proportional? Do we have a provision that says, okay, under those circumstances, you're going to be able to put four units in? And obviously, the way we have it known, none of them have to be attainable or affordable because it's less than eight.
It's less than eight, yes.
Yeah.
Right, so you, right, I think that's, that's the concern.
Yes.
That's the concern. But if I could, I'll just give voice something to something that Bob Dupus might say if he were here. It's likely that redevelopment of this area is not imminent. So there's the possibility that if we put this forward to 2023 and it gets passed, and then at 2024, we introduce an amendment to this that includes that language, or we introduce a townwide inclusionary bylaw that would cover this, there's a likelihood that everything will be all right, but, you know. It's anybody's guess.
I would take the other thing because there's nothing being developed, it's not pressing that we get this in the 23 town meeting. I would rather put it through in a way that it's going to work and that we're going to get the public to support it. I I just, I feel like if there isn't enough, a guarantee of some, of the, all this new density having at least some attainable and affordable housing in it, we're just never going to get the the two third support that we need.
Okay. Warren or Charlene?
I'm hearing more and more what Bob's saying, and I'm agreeing more and more with what he has to say on this.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I, I have that concern, having been in this field for so long. Oh, nothing's been happening there, nothing, then all of a sudden, wham, and you're, you're caught off guard. And I'm just, I'm just concerned that people may take advantage of being able to create the housing units that may not be what we all intended them to be.
Okay.
Diversity is good.
Yeah, diversity is good. I, I, I don't want to say that, you know, addition of some more, uh, higher priced units is bad. But we just need to ensure that it's not all that, um, by allowing the greater density that we're allowing here. Warren? It's, it's a tough call. I agree with you. It's a tough call because this has been, we've worked on this a long time. Um, even when Ryan was here before, I think we even started it in 2015, right after the visioning study. And we decided to table it for the annual town meeting 2016 because we didn't want to give too many things, uh, at one meeting. And so we did South Chatham and then what we called the in-between areas. So we did those two. And I understood at that time that, you know, basically immediately after 2016 annual town meeting, we were just going to pick up West Chatham and move forward very quickly with that. But a lot of other things came in the way. So here we are, but there's, but there's been a lot of effort put into this. It's been a long time coming and I agree with Arthur. We've got good, good momentum and we want to see it go forward. But yet I do share the concerns of Bob and they're definitely my concerns. And that we don't want to put something in place. And I think we may not be able to put it in place because I'm not convinced that it would get broad support in the community without some, um, restrictions on the greater density that we're allowing. My humble opinion. Arthur, I know you're in favor of going forward.
Now, I, I understand what, what you're all come, come to conclusion on. I mean, if, if that's the way the board generally goes, my, my one rah rah vote is not going to be enough to, uh, push it across. So we'll work it out. So, um, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to be the lone battler on this. I'm interested in getting it, it passed. And I understand if there is a concern about an affordable housing component being part of it, right? As a requirement, then, and we don't think that we're going to get the two thirds, which essentially if we don't get it, it doesn't matter what we have then. I think with, with some of, we have one informational session here before the public hearing. I'm not sure that's going to be enough, quite frankly. That might be a, a reason to push this anyway. Now, if we have a fall town meeting, I'd be all for resolving this and put it on a fall town meeting. If we can get it there and not even wait to May 2024.
Yeah.
I, I could, I could support that.
Ryan?
That'll put a timeline on, uh, somebody though.
Yeah. Katie, did you want to make a comment about fall town meeting or about anything?
Of course, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, we don't know whether or not there will be a fall town meeting. But I think that the board should continue to move forward with the momentum that it has, completing the work. And, and being prepared, if that is the case, to be able to move forward. If there were a fall or a special town meeting of sorts, that, that that's something that, that could, um, be included in a warrant. So I think that that was Ryan's suggestion and I think I, I agree with that. If that's, if the board's concerned about moving forward immediately, let's just continue to move forward with completing everything that we need to complete and, um, and have it ready as soon as we can, and can get it on a warrant.
Great. Warren?
My turn?
Yes.
Well, I'm in favor of moving forward with the draft as is. I'm content to have the wording that's in there. That's permitting deed restricted affordable housing units as a bonus as, uh, whatever that ends up being dovetailed into or defined or explained and so on. I think it's going to end up with some affordable housing. And to, to have that one issue, given the thousand other issues that we have already addressed in this from form-based housing to, uh, airport issues to, uh, R P Zs to, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I would, I would find it, uh, uh, really unfortunate if we started backsliding and we're now talking about a, uh, a summer town or a fall town meeting. The, um, so that's, that's where I come out on it. Even if there may be, uh, some imperfections or, or some, some pieces which cannot be drafted quite yet for other reasons. I have, I have really two comments really. One is perhaps I'll go with it first. It's on page 13 on the use table. I do not recall the multifamily dwelling, um, as, uh, as being a special permit required as to why we said that was the case.
Yeah.
As opposed to, given that we're talking about mixed use, housing is, uh, you know, permitted. So I was just going to ask the question, did we put a special permit in there? Is that was our intent? I don't remember why we said you needed a special permit as opposed to multifamily dwellings in, uh, zones A two and B would be permitted. But, um, I'm okay with it being a special permit as well. It just, I couldn't remember the rationale for it. My, my bigger question has to do with, and this is your fault, or, you know, Catherine, you put me on this short-term rental committee. So now you're going to have to listen to, you know, the aha moment that I had there and, uh, people talking to me in the hallway about it. The, i- i- if we can roll forward 50 years and we have a lot of, uh, 12 units per acre development in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. What might that look like? Well, there're going to be some affordable units, yes. But, um, more likely than not, there're going to be people that are buying them, building them or from a developer for a summer hot, a summer house. They've got a house somewhere else. And/or they're going to be buying them, uh, in increasing numbers to essentially run them as a business. If you can pick up eight of our brand new, uh, housing units, you'll put them into a management company or a whatever, or just arrangements with the owners and say, well, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll rent it from you. 12-month lease and we'll sublet these things, you know, for a day or two at a time, a week at a time, a month at a time. And if that were to happen, our West Chatham Neighborhood Center is going to be empty nine months of the year.
Yeah.
And that's exactly the opposite of what the core objective was, which was to create a neighborhood.
Right.
With a center.
Right.
And so I said, okay, well, where that led me in talking to other people was we need to, um, we need to ideally prohibit short-term rentals in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Now, I didn't define what short-term rental meant there. Cause there's different views from different people. The, uh, regulation that's going and to be presented to the, um, to the board, uh, tomorrow, I think it is, uh, says, um, anything over, there, uh, less than 31 days is what I think the draft regulation ended up at. Okay. Other towns tend to focus on 90 days. So anything less than 90 days is a short-term rental. Yeah, I don't know what the right answer is, but at least one of my thoughts was that we ought to prohibit short-term rentals, meaning anything less than 181 days. If you rent something for 181 days, that person is a permanent resident of Chatham. And the person who rented it is by definition not. It could be empty part of the year. But if you have somebody there who's rented it for six months, the chances are pretty good that as often as not, they'll be there year round. If, I, I would be very much in favor of the result if you could prohibit short-term rentals, meaning anything less than a year. But I don't think that's going to pass muster. It's not going to be fair if you've got somebody who is buying a place to go to in the summer and they just, you know, they, they can't rent it out any other time. So I don't think that's going to fly with the public. But, um, saying nothing, which is what our current bylaw says, is going to guarantee, as far as I can see, that over time, you're going to end up with just, uh, a bunch of short-term rental properties, period. Because why wouldn't you do that as opposed to trying to build housing? Especially in our case, this neighborhood center is in the perfect place. You can walk to the beach. You can walk to a, uh, the grocery store. You can walk to, uh, uh, a medical building across the street. And as other things come along, you'll have everything you could possibly want for a short-term renter. It's right on the bus route. I mean, so that, um, it seems to me this board has got to come up with a way to prohibit short-term rentals or the downside of that. And the, my suggestion, having wrestled with it, but without the benefit of input from the rest of the board, was that we ought to just prohibit, uh, rentals, uh, that are less than 181 days. If you're an owner, you can rent your house out, you can stay there in the summer. But you're not going to turn this into a Airbnb, go online and rent a house for two days. That's, that has to be, that has to be prohibited right from the beginning. You don't want anybody going forward to try and build a bunch of housing units with the expectation that one way or another, they are going to put them under a common management that will be, uh, renting them out and pushing them, uh, out to the public in, uh, online via, uh, realtors, via, um, any means possible. It's, it is happening to a, to a, a minor degree in Chatham, which is the concern of the short-term rental committee. And, um, that's being dealt with, um, I think pretty well by the draft regulation that's going forward. But the concern about, um, having essentially a motel business, a hotel business essentially created by pooling together, uh, properties that are under management and promotion by a central administrator. Such that the owners don't even have to worry about it. It'd be, it's going to guarantee our, our neighborhood center is empty most of the year. Which is not, I think, why we've all spent so much time working on a draft regulation. So at any rate, I would, um, I would be reluctant to go forward unless I can, um, uh, impose upon the rest of the board to either go along with the prohibition of short-term rentals over, uh, less than 181 days or something else that would keep them from being essentially an Airbnb and nobody lives there. Which is not the intent. So those are my two comments.
Okay. I just wanted to circle back to the comment about multifamily housing by special permit. Somehow I do recall at a meeting that the board decided to change that to be by right. Am I incorrect in that memory? Did we?
I thought so.
Did we change it to be by right rather than special permit, for multifamily dwelling in zone A two and zone B? Somehow I rec- I recall that. Katie, do you recall?
I don't recall, Madam Chair, but I wasn't at every meeting, so we can certainly go back and review the tapes if.
Okay.
If that's.
Madam Chair, and that was my recollection, but I didn't want to say it because it's.
But you recall that too.
Well, that's what I thought, that's why I brought it up.
And Arthur recalls it.
I recall that too, yes.
Yes. So.
But, I mean, it, put it this way, does it make sense to have it be permitted by right?
By right. It makes sense to me.
Well, then maybe we can make that decision right here and now.
We could, we could take another vote on it now if, if that would be helpful.
Do you want to vote or just consensus?
Yeah, consensus is fine. And I think we have the consensus.
Yeah.
And even we recall that we changed it to by right for multifamily dwelling.
But I would love to hear the comments of the board about my conclusion, having sat through all the short-term rental issues. And the things that are happening in other towns and what we're trying to prevent here. Is, is, is there a way that we can prohibit short-term rentals in the short, in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? And at the same time, allow owners to rent out their house if they just, you know, bought it for a, a summer place? Again, prohibiting rentals of less than 181 days was the best solution that I could come up with. But again, I'm not an expert in zoning, so.
Charlie, you had a comment.
Warren, that's, that's exactly why I had mentioned that there was no mention of prohibiting seasonal use of housing. Cause in our bylaw, seasonal use is 180 days. So that, you know, I, I think that definitely.
Well, that might be a way to do it.
Yeah.
You know, we prohibit seasonal.
In the purpose, it's, it is not the intent, or usually don't do things as a negative. You do a purpose. But the intent is for, um, non-seasonal use.
So seasonal rentals would be any rental that is less than 180 days?
Seasonal use, um, this is right from the zoning bylaw, uh, means the use of a lot or structure, um, for 180 days or less per year on the average. An applicant may show and it goes on to how you determine that you're not seasonal, you know, based on bills and things like that. But, I mean, it's.
Right.
It's a start.
Well, is it possible to have a footnote on the use table that, you know, seasonal rentals are prohibited?
Go ahead, Ryan.
And is that what I think, you know, does the board agree with that conclusion of mine, having sat through all of the, the reasons why we need to con- regulate, uh, short-term rentals?
I, I mean, I think anything's possible, but I would just caution that we haven't looked at what the enforcement or the monitoring piece of that might look like, which, you know, um, I'd want to see how we're treating other seasonal uses throughout town. Um, and understand what that, that looks like from a staff perspective for enforcement.
Well, there's a difference. Assuming that the select board goes forward with it tomorrow night, then you'll know what the regulation of short-term rentals that's being proposed is. But the focus there is on rentals that are, uh, less than 30 days.
There, there's, there's a difference between, I, I mean, part of the problem of enforcement is it's not, there's no, there's no really restriction from somebody who owns a house now renting it out. If it's restricted in this area that it's not allowed, at least there's a, a, a means of enforcing that. It's, it's not allowed. And, a- as opposed to, well, we really can't do anything. We have to look at the water usage or the number of rooms and other things that we, that's why it's not enforced. If it's not allowed, it's not allowed. So I, I'm all for it. I'd even, I'm even wondering about just as a, not allowing subletting. I know that, uh, there are, there are cities and towns that subletting is just, it, it's illegal. Is that, is that something that also could be, um, part of this? But I, I, I agree with, let me start with saying, I like the 181-day non-seasonal, non-seasonal.
Well, you know, if, if seasonal rentals covers that, then that's maybe the short way to do that.
Yeah.
You have to have a definition.
But the regulation that's going to be presented to the select board, uh, certainly prohibits subletting.
Yeah.
You know, an owner can rent whatever they want to rent, you know, and they can, but you can't sublet, which is what is required if you're going to be running it like an Airbnb by the day or week. Those are essentially rental contracts or, and they're subletting it.
Yeah.
And/or if, um, uh, you know, and those, those are being prohibited.
Warren, but you're discussing a proposed. Warren, but you're discussing a proposed draft bylaw from the short term rental committee that's going.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting that, the question was, we don't, we'll have to figure out how we're gonna regulate rentals. Well, short term rentals are going to be covered by that regulation if it's passed.
If it's passed, yeah.
Yeah, but that's a much lower hurdle than a bylaw, right?
I think we still need to deal with what's before us and what's in place, you know. And I think what I'm hearing, that there's a number of issues regarding, how to put it, how the additional residential density is implemented that are not directly addressed in the draft that we have before us. And I think, just to comment on your comment, Bob, that if it's not allowed, it's not allowed. There still needs to be, if we want to not allow short term rentals under 181 days, there's, there needs to be some enforcement system, because once property is owned, people can really use it as they wish.
I, I, I somewhat disagree. I mean, we've never had, we don't have anywhere in the town where seasonal renting is prohibited. If it was part, if it was part of this bylaw, that that is not a, a legal use of the property, at least now we have some leverage for enforcing that. We don't, it's much, it'll be much easier to enforce the bylaw saying, you're not allowed to do that, than I need to look at how many rooms you have and I need to see how many parking spaces and the other things that we have to enforce, what we're hoping to enforce with the other. I, I, I mean, tell me, tell me why we shouldn't say, non-seasonal usage is not, is not permitted in the, in the, in the whole zone. I think that's a straightforward thing that we should, we should be pushing right now.
Ryan, did you wanna comment?
I, I, I think there's a lot of merit in where you're trying to go with this. I, I think that, you know, there's some problems in the seasonal use definition as I see it, which requires the zoning enforcement officer, our building commissioner, to respond to complaints of violations of seasonal use by requesting utility bills, U.S. post office records, sworn affidavits from three abutting year-round residents or other evidence that there's been a violation. I think if Jay Briggs is listening right now, he would have a heart attack if this were added to his plate. So, I mean, I think that there's another way of getting at this, right? I mean, I, the short term rental recommendations, you know, this is first being brought forward tomorrow night to the select board, that's correct. You know, I would suggest maybe tabling this for the moment, deciding how you're going to proceed. And if there's a clear direction from the select board following that presentation of that language, we can certainly work with an amendment that would address the concern that you have in this zoning.
Referencing that.
Correct.
Again, I think it is, the regulation, I think, has been fairly well vetted by all of the stakeholders within Chatham, from owners to realtors to general public to the planning board and Board of Health and so on. And I think it's a pretty good stab at trying to address the issues. I think the biggest problem that the committee had was trying to get anybody to define what's the problem. There are 1,300 short term rentals that we know of, about 700 more that are probably there that we don't know about. We know about it because the state allows, you know, tells us who they are and provides 1.7 million of free cash flow for us. Not bad, you know, as a result of the taxes which are refunded to us. But there is a real concern about houses that are being, you know, a three bedroom house that's advertised for 25 people that can sleep there, that sort of thing. Board of Health issues, all sorts of issues. And I think the regulation that's being put forward is really gonna be pretty good. And make no mistake about it, it would cover, it would cover anything that's in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center because it covers any place that you sleep.
Yeah.
Residents. And it would perhaps cover much of my concern here. But again, as we sit here, there is no regulation.
It's not in place at the moment. So I just wanna bring us back on task, if I may. We need to consider what we have before us in this draft and whether, without knowing that it might be in place soon, the short term rental regulation, but it's not in place right now, and we don't have an inclusionary bylaw in place right now. So knowing that, you know, what we need to decide, and I realize it's a very difficult deci, it's a tough call, you know, do we wanna go ahead with the timetable as outlined to bring this to annual town meeting 2023, May 2023? Or do we wanna continue to process this and add language in this bylaw that addresses the issues regarding, and there's numerous issues regarding the increased, mostly regarding the increased residential density that we're allowing here and wanting to restrict it in some ways to produce, to better ensure that the results that we're looking for are the results that we get. Maybe that's the best way to, to put it. So, yes.
Okay, so I'll start off the way Warren did. I'm in favor of this still progressing. None of them listening to everything. I think Warren's statement that without the residential piece, you don't have a neighborhood center. And he's right about it. If you have just three months of residential, that's not a neighborhood center. So I completely support your direction on what you've stated there. I think that's essential. I think it needs to be in here now.
In here.
Absolutely. So if we don't have at least, whatever you wanna call it, restrictions on seasonal or whatever, 181 days, however you put it together, that's gotta be in here, in my opinion, because my experience says when we did, when I did this before in my past community, the residential came first. It was permanent, it happened, and then the town center developed after it. I'm, so I think that the, the permanent residential piece is an important component. It's gotta work. Otherwise, the neighborhood center will go nowhere. So I'm still in favor of going ahead with this. I think we'll get to that, you know, affordable piece in due time. I'm not as worried about it. I think that that's something that has been flushed out in all other areas. I think it needs to be more vetted than what we all have time to vet for in here anyway, even if you write it for us and you have it tomorrow.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I'm gonna come back to, to argue a little bit with Ryan about the provision. You, you're mentioning the tools you now have to enforce it, but if it was part of a, of an excluded use, you would also have the evidence of an advertisement for a rental at that property as something that you could, could immediately enforce.
Right.
So I, I, to leave it out because we have, we don't enforce it now seems like the wrong direction. We should, we should exclude it. We should be very clear that it's exclu, it's excluded. And we will develop the enforcement tools that are necessary to make sure that it, it mostly doesn't happen. I'm not saying somebody's not gonna rent it out to their cousin for a week or two. We're not, I don't, that's not what we're worried about.
Right.
Katie, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So although seasonal use is defined in our zoning bylaw, it's not a use in the use table. And so something that we'd want to look at if we were going to prohibit a seasonal use or a short term, short term rental, we want to define that and add it into the use table of where it is going to be prohibited. And those are things that, again, if these are, you know, concerns that the board has about moving forward tonight with this bylaw, I, I think it's gonna take staff a little time to come up with the appropriate wording and run that by town council to make sure that we are able to include the proper language in the bylaw. So I would just, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. Although it's defined, it's not a specific use in the use table.
Right, exactly, right. So even that, we probably couldn't, so there's the attainable and affordable piece, and then there's the seasonal use piece. Even that, to add quickly, is not something that we could do.
And if I could, Madam Chair, by not allowing the short term rentals or the seasonal use, if you will, that will push the units more towards year-round units. And therefore, you know, we have some affordable and some attainable, but even if, again, they would, because they're not going to be allowed to be rented out on a, on a nightly or weekly basis, then I think that there is, you know, that will certainly push the units towards being more of a year-round type dwelling unit. So I think we, I think we would want to work the language for, for both aspects and, and make sure that it's, each are properly defined.
If seasonal rentals is something that is not a term of art and defined somewhere, can't we just say what we sort of mean in that, you know, you're gonna prohibit rentals of less than 180 days in our bylaw? That's pretty well defined.
In the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw is what you're saying?
Excuse me?
You're saying to add that, that sentence to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw?
No.
I mean, where I just am, am being cautious in my mind about this is I understand the intent is to prohibit seasonal vacation rentals, but we have a seasonal workforce that needs shorter term leased housing as well. And so I just think we don't want to preclude a need that we have while trying to minimize impacts from, you know, that just muddies.
I disagree with that completely.
That's not what's gonna happen.
That's, yeah. We're not pursuing that as part of this. If you want that, that's gotta come completely out aside of what this bylaw is now. I, I, that, that is an issue. We're not gonna solve that today. We might never solve that. So I think that that's gotta be off the table for now unless somebody comes up with a proposal and a bylaw to address it.
And we've excluded dormitories.
Yes, we have, yes. And I think that's correct. Now, I remember in the board specifically considered that earlier on when we were considering, even before we were integrating form-based code. I think we considered including dormitories and I, as I recall, we did decide that we didn't want to have housing for seasonal workers in West Chatham Neighborhood Center, that the purpose that it is a neighborhood, yeah. Not to say that that isn't needed by the community, but that the neighborhood centers were not, not here. I do recall that conversation. Yeah.
There is a tourist home, what is it, and it's special condition. Could we address that for a minute? What did we mean there?
Back to the use table.
Tourist home.
As our zoning bylaw person have a.
I don't have my bylaws in front of me.
I have it. A tourist home means a building, housing, a dwelling unit in which overnight rooming accommodations are provided or offered for transient guests for compensation. The term includes bed and breakfast and similar transient lodging establishments operated within a residence. So there's the difference there. A tourist home is in a residence.
Yeah. So we decided that we would allow that by special, did we say special condition? We did. We could change our mind if we want to.
Yeah, because Warren just described that eight unit.
Yeah.
Bed and breakfast.
If I might though, a dwelling unit in a tourist home that's renting a room are, to me, completely different. There are a number of bed and breakfasts in, in Chatham, in neighborhoods that you'd be surprised they're in, that, that are all, you know, fine and vetted and beautiful places to stay. But, you know, you're not gonna build eight units and rent each of those out as a tourist home, because that deviates completely from the definition.
Why? I buy, I buy the eight units, I knock a couple walls down, and I make it into a tourist home. I mean, I.
Then that's, you now have one unit.
Yeah.
Not eight units.
And then you're violating the bylaw.
Okay.
Have one.
I'm not, I, I'd be willing to take tourist home out of this.
Out as a prohibited.
Yes. Just to avoid the possibility that somebody was going to do that, because.
I mean, because basic, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine.
I think the reason we allowed it is because we didn't wanna prohibit someone from renting a room or a couple of rooms in their home, in their residence. When we considered this back in, you know, the pleasantries.
So it, it sounds like this is, what I heard you read is a single family residence is going to, to provide.
Is gonna provide this, so, yeah, it's.
So a, so you're saying that it wouldn't apply to a multifamily?
I don't believe that it would.
Okay. So then if that's the case, then yes, let's prohibit.
We have to, yeah.
And that way, we don't have to really clog, because we're not, we're not allowing any single family residential, right?
Right.
You have existing single family residential in this, in this neighborhood.
Yeah.
And you wanna allow for them to prosper and, you know, and if their only way is to do a tourist home, why not? You know, granted, it may be only seasonal, but that will keep them going.
Yeah, I'm getting a distant recollection of the discussion.
I would just caution about the optics of continuing to make changes at this point and, and, you know, try to commit to the difficult position of either proceeding or not. And then, you know, giving the, the public a chance to respond and let you hear what, you know, needs additional tweaking through the lead up to a public hearing.
And Ryan, I do have a distant recollection that, hearing the last comments about the tourist home, that it was really someone, not I, made the comment that, well, for the residences which are there, the single family homes that are there by right and will continue to be there, there was a way to provide a way for them to become more of a neighborhood center-type built infrastructure by becoming a bed and breakfast and renting out some rooms. And that is something that we didn't necessarily wanna encourage, but didn't wanna prohibit. And hence, special conditions are what.
Can we put a footnote on that that's?
Stop!
No, a special condition for, a special condition for existing single family homes. Not, you can't build a new one.
Well, but that's clear because one family dwelling is prohibited.
Yeah, but I just.
Build a single fam, yeah.
It's all clear.
Yeah, the existing single family dwellings would be.
We're chasing our tail here.
The existing non-conforming.
All right, fine.
Yeah.
But again, I, I, I continue to come back, the one big, big thing that I just said, how can this not be in our bylaw that we can't, you know, we gotta prohibit short term rentals? Otherwise, there won't be anybody living there.
Okay, so.
So Catherine, I propose.
We still need to come back to our decision.
Yeah, I still propose that we advance this. Go to.
Absolutely.
Go to our steps that we have outlined in here, that Ryan has outlined in here. Go before the board and initiate a public hearing process, get a public information session to be determined, all right? Go to the airport commission and then hold a public hearing. After the public hearing, if we decide after all the stuff that we've done, that we can or can't go ahead, I, I think then we're a little bit more informed and comfortable about advancing this or not. And, and right now, if, if we get good support associated with this during some of these steps that we have in here, then I'm for, all for going, going forward with it. So that's, that's my proposal.
Okay, so Arthur is in favor of option one, essentially, which is to, to go ahead, even though, you know, as it is, and submitted to select board and public hearing with the idea that if it's, if it's not being well received, we can. the idea that if it's, if it's not being well-received, we can always pull it back at that time. There's still an opportunity to pull it. So that is option one. Why don't I just get a sense of the board? Option, that's option one. Option two is that we look to a, a future annual town meeting, whether it's in the fall or 2024, and we give, we allow time now to add all the language that we'd like to add about attainable housing and affordable housing and prohibiting short-term rentals and all the open issues. So those are the two options. What say you, Mr. Wurchafter?
Well, I'll go with one, with the understanding that you're working on those two subject areas and that we can have something in the, in the final document that's going to cover those things. Because I totally agree with Warren. There's, if we, if we don't have a, some kind of limitation on, on short-term rentals, it's, it's not something I'm going to vote for. So, so, yeah, I'm willing to go forward because I, I think at this point, we need to hear from the public anyway, and so let's just go forward. But there are some weaknesses here that need to be remedied.
All right. So I'm hearing...
I definitely want to go forward, but again, I'd like to propose that we have a ban on short-term rentals or rentals less than 181 days, or 180. I'm not sure, you know, take a pick. And that's not terribly complicated. I, you know, drafted it, you know, I don't know how you change that. Just a question of where you put it in the draft.
Yeah, that might be a little easier to do.
And if it gets changed because of whatever, that's fine. The regulation of short-term rentals will still cover, you know, renting out things that are in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center if and when that becomes permitted. But the idea, we're not trying to, you know, the short-term rental regulation is meant to encourage and promote short-term rentals. I mean, it's not meant to kill the goose that's given us 1.7 million of free cash every year. It's quite the opposite, but you've got to rein it in. And we're not trying to promote short-term rentals here. So I think we're trying to do exactly the opposite, and I think we ought to say so.
Yes. Good. Ryan?
I would just ask that you allow staff to bring you that language in the run-up to the public hearing and not decide what that language is tonight.
Yeah, I think that's, that's correct.
Trust me, I'm not, you know, I have no pride of authorship here. I just am very much in favor of option one, assuming that that one addition is in there as opposed to the long list of things which you are working on and which may not be even draftable quite yet.
Right, so with the understanding that the piece about attainable and affordable housing may not be drafted to insert prior to the public hearing. Okay, yeah, okay. And Charlene?
I'm, I'm fine with moving forward, and I mean, just for simplicity's sake, and I keep beating this dead horse, I think having language just in the purpose, because you've got the definition of seasonal use, whether it's a good definition or not, it's not a use as, as Katie said in the use table, but putting something, a short, sweet, and to-the-point statement in the, in the purpose, that it is not intended for seasonal use of housing, period, is, is a simple...
Okay.
Is a simple fix.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we had talked about that, or you had talked about that at the last meeting, that last bullet under the purpose, to allow more diverse housing types attainable to year-round residents of all income levels.
Yes, great, yes.
Capture that.
Yeah, that's great.
But also the, but not intended for seasonal use.
Yes.
I know you don't usually do a negative in, in the purposes, but I don't know how to make it a positive, so.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, as long as it is also in the bylaw.
But Charlene, you're okay with moving forward with the timetable, with the draft as is, moving forward with the timetable for Annual Town Meeting 2023?
Yes. I, I agree with what Arthur said, if, you know, we get to the point of the public hearing.
That is unworkable. We can pull it at that.
I'm, I'm going to reserve my, my final decision until then. So I'd like all the rest of you hard.
And, and frankly, you can, it can be on the warrant, and the board can decide after hearing even more that there's going to be no motion on it.
Yeah, that's true.
And it just sits silent and, because the worst thing that can happen, in all honesty, is that it goes to town meeting, it fails, and you can't bring it back for two years.
Yes, that is, yes, we want to avoid that. We definitely want to avoid that.
I did have one question, if I might.
Yes.
Regarding the RPZ.
Yes.
Do we still, even if the, the, if we decide not to go forward with this bylaw, do we still need to make changes to the use table with the footnotes for the RPZ?
For the R20?
For the R20?
I think we need to discuss that.
We would need to discuss that because the intent has always been that the RPZ on both ends, on both ends of the runway would be...
Addressed.
Would be covered, right?
Yes.
So I...
But you're going to still have R20. If we don't move forward, there's still going to be R20 on this end, right?
No.
On the, on the south end?
No, not really.
No.
No, because the RPZ doesn't, doesn't encounter the R20 on the, on the West Chatham side.
Only on the north end.
Only on the north side.
How, I guess my question is, has that RPZ footnote been included yet in the zoning bylaw? So we still need to do that, regardless of the Harwich, West, or West Chatham.
On the north, on the north.
On the north, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be one of the articles that is prepared.
Regardless of the West Chatham...
I don't think we're going to, I don't think we plan to do it separately, no. We plan to do the footnotes as a piece for both ends of the runway.
Okay, I, maybe I'm not making myself clear.
Yeah.
That's all right.
Yeah, we, we can talk about it. It's...
It's not going to be a separate action that you would propose independently of putting forth the West Chatham rezoning on the warrant. It would be, it would be included in the same action, is that correct?
It would be a separate article on the warrant.
Be a separate article.
But it would be a tandem, sort of, you know, a tandem piece with the West Chatham. Those would move forward together or not at all?
Yeah.
For the RPZ?
That's the key thing.
Yeah.
I'm missing something there. That's okay. We'll talk afterwards.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Good. So we could take a, I'm hearing that everybody wants to move ahead with option one. We could take a formal vote, and I think that would be a good idea. So can we have a motion?
So the motion would be just procedurally to refer the article to the select board to initiate the public hearing process on West Chatham zoning as proposed.
So moved.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Bob Wurchafter, second.
Let's have a roll call vote. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Well, just point of clarification, with the provision that there's an addition to the draft...
No, that's not what we're voting on.
Prohibiting short-term rentals?
No, that's not what we're voting on.
Oh, boy.
That can be introduced through the public hearing process. Right now, you're just voting to refer the draft zoning to initiate the public hearing process. Amendments can be forthcoming.
If we're all in agreement that the short-term rentals ought to be prohibited, why can't we just move it forward with that in there and take it out if there's some reason to?
Because that would be drafting language right now to insert in the article that you're forwarding to the select board, and I don't think that there's consensus around what that language should actually be. It can be introduced at a later date through the public hearing process, but right now, this is the ministerial action just to initiate the public hearing.
Yeah. You're, you're free to vote, no?
No, I'll, I'll vote in favor. It's just that I find it remarkable, you know, we can leave it to staff to say how you, you know, short-term rentals of less than 180 days are prohibited. It seems to me that's not particularly difficult, and I'm happy to have staff work on the language and stick it in the right place.
Let's continue with our vote, you know, Charlene?
But I, I'm not going to hold this up because of my strong feeling that it's got to be in there. So I'm in favor.
Thank you, thank you, Warren. Charlene?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. So, so good. So we'll move this forward and refer it to select board and move forward with the public hearing process. All right, great. I did want to mention before we, I, I think we've covered all those issues. I just wanted to mention to the board about the February 8th meeting. The board agreed last time that we would send the draft of the footnotes to the airport commission, and that's been done. And their reply was, was, and also our liaison to select board, Mike Shell, recommended that, that we have the town planner and chair, which is a usual manner of how we deal with this, meet with the airport commission to discuss any questions that they have regarding our approach to addressing the RPC concerns on February 8th. But I just wanted to talk to the board, make sure you're all right with that. I think in the past, we've understood that having a joint meeting is rather complicated procedurally. I think this is a good solution. We are going to invite town council to also be present to answer questions. I'd also like to ask the vice chair, if, Arthur, if you could come in case your, especially in case your research on what other airports have done is called upon.
Yes, I can make myself available. I'm just checking my counter.
Okay. But I just want to let the board know that that's the plan and make sure that everyone's on board with that plan.
Good plan.
Okay, any comments?
I'm wide open on here.
Okay, great. So it'll be chair and vice chair and principal planner. I don't, Katie, would you be attending? No, all right. And we will try to get town council to also be there, all right? Yes. Any other comments from the board? Yes.
I would just suggest, Ryan, that you amend this expanded map as part of the draft to show the zones that are...
Yeah.
The A1, A2, A, and B, right?
Yeah.
Just be consistent with that, and, okay.
Yes, that, that is a task unfinished.
Okay, but be, be, before this moves forward, that should be flushed, you know, it's, it's pretty much just shown different colors on lots, that's all, so.
Yeah, no, we discussed that. It's just a question of getting the graphics prepared.
Right.
Yeah, so that can be done. Yeah, great. So I should open it up to public comment if there's anyone in the audience, there's no one here, but anyone connected online who would like to make comments? Please, I don't see any hands raised, but we'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. Do you see any hands raised? So no comments from, is that, is that someone? Is that Peter Kokolas? So I don't see any hands raised from the public for any public comment. I don't have any more comments to make, so I guess we're at that point where I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Charlene.
Warren Chain, a second.
Thank you very much. So let's do a roll call vote. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene.
Approve.
And this is Catherine Helfman. I also approve that we adjourn. Let's note the time as 5:59 in the evening, and thank you, everyone, for participating, and please enjoy the rest of the evening.